Good evening. It is Monday, November 11th. This is the Guilford Board of Education. Thank you for joining us. I ask you to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Before we jump into our agenda, I do want to acknowledge that today is Veterans Day and really take a moment to thank the members of our community and members of their families and members of our country who have served. We do and have now for years keep schools open on Veterans Day to allow each of our schools to participate in learning in a variety of ways that most frequently involves members of our community and/or their families who are veterans coming into the schools to participate in some way. And I imagine we'll be hearing about that either tonight or next month. We often get reports about that, which is always great to hear. The first item on the agenda is to act on the minutes of October 15th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or corrections? I did have one, which is on the first page, under 3.1. It's actually a correction to a correction. Easy to have happen. On the first bullet, the sentence reading with the highest class size being 22, that should say 23. And just for the utmost clarity on page six, under 9.11, and specifically 9.11.4, I believe that that's the regulation policy 4112 should just be added there. Anybody else have?
Nope.
All right. So there's a motion and second. All those in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please say aye. Are there any against or recusals?
Abstentions.
Two abstentions. So Mr. Stried at Mr. Brooks were unable to be here. All right. Next up, approval of the meeting minutes for Monday, October 28th. This was our workshop meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second.
Any comments, corrections? Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? No. We are at public. Thank you. I'm going to pass this by here. We are on public comments for topics on the agenda. Is there anyone? I don't see anyone in the public who's been joining us tonight. So we will move on to item number five, which is review and approval of expenditures for the month. I'll turn it over to Kristen.
Okay, thank you. Our expenditures for the month of October were $5,525,504.89. This puts us at 30.35% of the budget as compared to 30.10% in 2023, so right on target. Revenue for October was $118,085, which includes $2,617.52 for Medicaid, $950.62 for non-resident tuition, $13,000 for tuition from Clinton, $23,503 for pre-K tuition, and then interestingly, $78,013.86 for the Para-educator Deductible Assistance Program. This is a state-funded program where we really just act as a pass-through entity to help cover medical costs, medical deductible costs for our para-educators. Salaries and employee benefits are pretty typical. Purchased services, we did have an encumbrance in the electricity line for the retro-commissioning program for the Guilford High School, which is an efficiency evaluation that we're going to be conducting here at the high school. Otherwise, relatively typical expectations, a few particulars in the warrant that we discussed in detail at the previous meeting, at our operations meeting. Is there anything else that anybody wants to bring up at this meeting? That's it for me.
All right. So is there a motion to approve the October 2024 financial reports for fiscal year 2425?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? All right, that's everybody. Thank you. We are up to communications. Do any of my colleagues have communications they have received in the last month that they would want to share?
Yes. I think we collectively received several communications about weight room revisions and requests for staffing and for revisions to the equipment in the weight room.
That's right.
And I'll just add, we've had a few inquiries regarding the Italian offerings at the high school as well, the Italian language offerings.
Right. So these are both things that we heard a little bit as we started to mention that we are in budget season yet again. So yes, we've gotten communications on both. Anything else? All right. We are up to student reports. So I'm going to turn it over to our student Board of Ed representatives to provide those tonight.
Hi.
Hello. Hi.
Silver Baldwin, the fifth grade, had a team building field trip to Camp Hazen, where they made new friends and built on their peer relationships. And then last Friday, I think they celebrated or recognized on Veterans Day. And one of the things that they did was create a wall of honor of veterans that were in their lives. And they also had vets visit them and have informal conversations with the students over lunch. And I heard from the principal that this was like the student's favorite part. That was nice to hear. And overall, they said that in addition to in-class education about vets, the day was a powerful chance to learn about vets for both the students and the staff. And then for Melissa Jones, they recently, or currently they're hosting a holiday food drive for the Guilford Social Services. And they recently had their fall festival. And additionally, they had their yoga and wiffle ball enrichment. And lastly, on the third grade, had a field trip to Dennison Pai Quasapos Nature Center. And that was fun. So for Guilford Lakes, over 100 families attended the lake's trunk-or-treat, and they said it was a wonderful event for family and community. They also had, this one interested me because I do cross-country at the high school, but the fourth graders did a mile run here at the high school with Mr. Bello. Third grade had an in-house field trip. Mystic Seaport came and visited them to teach them about local government and the voting process. Second grade learned about fire safety. And then for Veterans Day, the students wore red, white, and blue. And local family members who were veterans came to the school to be honored by student-made thank you cards. And the veterans ended their day by enjoying refreshments with their family.
For AW Cox Elementary, they welcomed veterans on Friday with a thank you ceremony. Students and staff are focusing on empathy this month as their main objective, and that's supported by daily classroom meetings. All grade levels are diving into their second literacy module of the year. This is developing readers, writers, and problem solvers. For Adams Middle School, quarter one had just finished last week, and report cards will be handed out. Adams had some team building trips in the month of October to Mystic, where they worked on leadership skills. Lastly, the post-school is going to Bridgeport Islanders skating hockey game tomorrow. For Kelvin Lee, the students have done their physical fitness tests, which I think Kara touched on earlier. They also held a school-wide math day with the help of parents and volunteers, and the students participated in math-related games. And on November 11th, they all went to the Guilford Green to support Veterans Day.
Do you want to say?
Oh, yeah. So for GHS News, we're having Tech Week, so for the rest of this week, students will be here working hard and staying late for almost maybe just the play. And it's happening, I think, this weekend. And it's also now except for November 16th at 2:00 p.m. So if you want to get your tickets, you should get them now. Additionally, Voices is getting ready to Carol. So be on the lookout for a link if you want them to come and sing at your party.
For sports, it's been great for GHS. Jordan Gould won the Class M state championship in diving. Field hockey won the SEC championship, and they're also advancing in states as well as girls soccer. And then the awaited football game, Guilford versus Hand, is coming up, which a lot of students are looking forward to and hopefully a win this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody have questions or no? You are welcome to stay. We also appreciate that you have busy lives, so if you want to go, you can go as well. But thank you so much for coming today. All right. Superintendent's report, Dr. Freeman.
I'll just start by building on what the students shared about Veterans Day. Veterans Day activities spilled from Friday through today. We had family members, community members, veterans visiting schools for all sorts of activities, from formal presentations to luncheons with students. It was very exciting to see the Lee students be back at the Green. It's the first time they've been to the event on the Green since pre-pandemic. And while they were not the guests of honor, they were sort of the highlight of the event. Every veteran who spoke talked about how much they appreciated the Lee students being present at that event today. Tomorrow, Lori Hahn will have a summary of Veterans Day activities and events that have taken place, both on Friday and today in our schools. And we'll be pushing that out to the entire community with a lot more detail and a lot of photos to supplement what the students and I just touched on. But it was a wonderful day in and around the schools today.
I was on a Zoom meeting today at work, and my colleague had to put her cell phone pause a couple times, and she came back, she was like, oh, my gosh, why can't we have school on Veterans Day so the kids can learn about it and they aren't running around my house? And so I had the chance to brag about the fact that we've done that.
Well, the history and the reasons for why we have school on Veterans Day were shared multiple times by our VIPs. And Carl Balistracy was given significant credit for helping us move to be in a place where we think that having school on Veterans Day is in fact a better and more educational way of recognizing Veterans Day than taking the day off and making a long weekend.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it was a really nice event.
Oh, my gosh. And they sang "It's a Grand Old Flag," the entire school, led by the music teacher. It was really special.
Stole the show.
Yeah. Yeah.
But again, there'll be a summary of all sorts of activities and ways that students both learned about and honored veterans and their service. And again, it was a two-day event. It wasn't just isolated to today. You'll see some of the posters around this room. I know that there were veterans here on Friday, and you heard of a couple other schools that got a head start on the activities as well.
Great.
I also want to note in your packet, I just want to bring this to your attention, there's no reason for you to take action on this. You heard about a number of field trips. There is a special field trip coming up on March 26th at Adams Middle School. It is voluntary. This will not be the whole school attending, but students at Adams have an opportunity to join a field trip. It's a one-day event. It's not an overnight, that they will be in New York City seeing a presentation of Back to the Future, a musical. This does involve parental cost. There is a cost that is associated with it, but any family that wants their students to attend pays the price. Students will be off seeing that and having that opportunity. Since it's a day out of school, it's out of state, I'm required to bring it to your attention. Students who choose not to participate will have a full day of events scheduled back at the school. We're not expecting this to be a whole school event, as tomorrow's event is at Adams. And then really briefly, I just wanted to remind the board and the community, you've already mentioned, Dr. Balistracy, we are in budget season. We have already had two public meetings to begin our budget build, a public hearing with the community, and those minutes were approved at the operations meeting earlier tonight, and then a meeting with the entire leadership team. Just feels like it was last week, but it might have been two weeks ago. Those minutes were just approved here. With those two public conversations under our belt, the administrative team begins meeting in earnest on Wednesday. We begin bringing in principals and department heads. This Wednesday, we'll start pulling all of our materials together and bringing a budget to the board for presentation in the new year. So from now until then, we'll really be working in our offices to pull that information together and put together a board, a budget packet that we can present to you in the new year for your action and deliberation. And again, just want to comment, really appreciated the public conversation and really appreciated the conversation with our leadership team. Got a lot of good work done and a lot of good ideas. We now need to see how many of those good ideas we can fit into a reasonable and responsible budget.
Sounds good.
And shockingly, that completes my report this evening.
I had one question. I think we try to do this as much as possible, which is for students or families who couldn't afford something like this trip, I'm thinking and hoping each school has a way that that can be
I don't have specific information about
confidentially communicated to principals or staff.
Typically, it is, especially these big trips.
It usually is. I don't have specific information, but I'm going to tell you that it's a safe assumption. I will follow up and get back to the board.
Right. No, I mean, I've heard that, and I know our booster clubs tried to do the same with things, but I just always like to make sure that we're finding ways that kids don't get left out simply because they couldn't afford. Excellent. All right. We are up to the board agenda. 9.1 is to approve a donation of $2,000 from a private individual to a student's MBDA project for the purchase of a USC Spirit 1250 high jump mat, pad for the girls' track team. Am I to understand that this starts out as a project and then ends up being a permanent mat for the girls' track team?
That is my understanding, that her project leads to this contribution.
Wonderful. All right. So is there a motion to approve this donation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think that's everybody. Wonderful. 9.2 is to receive school, 2025-26, school calendar drafts. You'll note we have actually three drafts in front of us. We typically have two, and I'm going to briefly introduce what the differences are, but then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Freeman for any additional comments. So draft number one has a start date, a proposed start date of August 28th, so that would be the Thursday prior to Labor Day, and an end date of Friday, June 12th, 2026. Draft number two differs from this calendar in two ways. There is a start date of Tuesday, September 2nd, '25, which would be the day after Labor Day, and an end date of Tuesday, June 16th, 2026. And then what's a little atypical is that we also have in front of us draft three, which had a start date of Thursday, August 28th, which again is prior to Labor Day, and end date of June 16th, Tuesday, June 16th, and a proposal, given the way that the winter holiday falls, to instead of having the Wednesday, December 2025, start that winter break to take two additional days on the 22nd and 23rd of December, which are the Monday and Tuesday, and create two full weeks off instead of having, again, kids in school Monday and Tuesday. So that's how these lay out. And now I'm going to turn it to you, to Dr. Freeman, to give us any context for that suggestion or any of the others.
Yep. That is a perfect summary of the differences that are presented here. I'll remind the board, the calendar is based on a regional template where the learn group of districts works on trying to align our calendars as closely as possible. And so from Guilford all the way out through Stonington, all of those communities look at a really similar template, and so this calendar is built on that template. The differences that you will still see local districts tend to fall around those start dates. Guilford tends to be a bit unusual in that we have often started after Labor Day since the construction here. That has become a bit of a tradition to begin after Labor Day. So calendar number one presents what's more typical with the beginning on the last Thursday and Friday of August, and if you do that, ends with a really neat final day of Friday, just as we have this year. Again, it's important to note that the difference before or after Labor Day this year only makes a difference of two school days, which is really small, relatively tight. The challenge is that there's a weekend in between that difference of only two days. It's not going to be long, I think, before we start to see bigger differences. As the calendar keeps creeping, we're going to get back to a four- or five-day swing, and that's going to be bigger to absorb. So draft number two, therefore, shows you what has been traditional here for the last 10 years or so. It does have that start on September 2nd. It is only a difference of two school days, but again, it straddles that weekend. And so by holding until after Labor Day, it does create that last day of school, graduation day, which will now fall on a Tuesday. You'll also notice that it's getting close to Juneteenth, and that has to do with the way the winter break falls, how it straddles almost two full weeks, which then led to the presentation of calendar number three, as we debriefed the first two with the leadership team. A number of principals were aware of December 22nd and 23rd and actually have some instructional concerns about those two days. We've got some concerns about attendance, where families may see the calendar as a two-week break, even though it's not officially a two-week break with that Monday and Tuesday hanging out there. And so there was a suggestion that we could look at those two days, which is the total difference of the Labor Day move anyway. You could still start before Labor Day, have the same ending date on a Tuesday, but create what would be a full two-week winter holiday with weekends on either end as well as in the middle. And so it becomes a significant time off. It might be a great time for some families, and it might be too much time together for other families. We recognize that that's an unusual presentation. Other items like the traditional five professional development days, Election Day as a day off from school and a day that focuses on professional development, the early release days, and the new structure for parent conferences, which worked really well, relatively seamlessly this September, by the way. Those are all baked into all three of these options. I will say that the administrative team didn't have an adamant opinion one way or the other on this, but leaned towards option number three, again, for those instructional concerns around those two days. If I may, I think that I might make the suggestion that this be a receive item tonight, and that board members take the opportunity over the next four weeks to talk to community members. This is being presented tonight. Anybody who watches this should be encouraged to share their opinions with board members. The calendar is a community decision. We're going to start, we're going to end in a relatively tight framework. I really do think that this is one of those decisions that should be made based on community input that you all receive around town. So I don't feel there's any pressure to take action on these presentations tonight, although I'm happy to answer any other questions.
I will say 100% receive only makes a lot of sense. We want to hear from the public.
Yeah, absolutely.
I will say, I am actually hearing earlier this year from people about the calendar. I think there's two things at play that we might want to consider when we're dealing with this, and this is just to kind of start the conversation. The first is, we have a lot of high school athletes that start much earlier in the year because CIAC allows them to start practicing earlier. That and, you know, I'm hearing, and this again, limited communication, but over the years, people have become very clear about the fact that childcare becomes an issue in that last week of August, where high school students have gone back to school. There are few opportunities in the community for camps and whatnot. And so there, you know, from what I am hearing is, it would make a lot of sense, to your point, to start before Labor Day. I think the added conversation here is obviously whether or not we're going to do a two-week vacation, actually more than two weeks, in December. But I think there's a lot of good reasoning for the start before Labor Day. There was a lot of good reason for it after Labor Day when we were in COVID. I think there was, you know, we had a lot of discussions here about needing to take extra time for our staff, for our families. It might make sense this year to start talking about going back to the norm of starting before Labor Day.
And those athletic differences, again, with only a two-day swing, we, the leadership team, are not pushing on this, but when that swing becomes four or five days again, you know, student athletes need to log at least 10 full practices before they're allowed to compete. And so it is going to become challenging if other schools are in four or five days before us and we're not having formal practices. It's going to make scheduling those fall games a greater challenge for us. And you're right, that's been exacerbated by some changes at CIAC, but less of an issue this year, but I'm also hearing those same two comments that you mentioned, one childcare and one about athletics being brought up about after Labor Day.
Dr. Freeman, do you see any disruption for the particularly younger elementary school students when they start prior to Labor Day and then have a three-day weekend? For kindergartners, it's almost like learning to go to school all over again. Do you notice disruption on that end?
No. Generally, the way that the principals have talked about it is it feels like easing in. You start with a two-day week, then you move to a four-day week, and then you have your first five-day week. And sometimes, depending on how the Jewish holidays fall in September, it's gone two days, then three days, then four days, and then a five-day week. And so I understand that, but we seem to, it seems to help some of the students, even some of the older students, get back into the routine before jumping into a full five-day week.
I had a couple of questions, just on, to John's point about childcare at the end of the summer. I look at this two-week block in December and think about working parents, because not every family is going to be able to head off for two weeks on, you know, I don't want to ever make that assumption
That's exactly right.
that every family is going to jet off somewhere for two weeks. So that seems, and I just think about the loss, the learning loss, and I'm not counteracting what the administrators have said. I can see how those two days kind of get lost too. But it just is a lot of time for, just throwing it out there. And I think of the childcare piece, but to the point of athletics, yeah, I think we've seen good or bad, because I think families still want to have their summer, and the high school athletes get called into captains' practices, like
Even early.
early, mid-August, which is actually problematic, because that's a separate conversation. But it just feels like we're pulling away their summer as it is with the athletics. But I hear about the point John made, that, you know, it's challenging to get those documented practices in before competition starts. Yeah.
And version two and three both move from a Friday to a Tuesday.
Graduation, which is hard for families.
And it was just at our last meeting that we all celebrated the fact that we codified this graduation day on a Friday. And even with snow days, graduation day will stay locked in on a Friday.
I was just going to say, that's the counter.
We have the opportunity to do that again next year, but only with calendar number one. And we don't always have that opportunity, because we only have 180 school days in our calendar.
Yep.
But we could offer that to two consecutive graduating classes if we go with number one. So again, there's always positives and negatives with each version. I think there's good and bad in all three of these, and it's certainly worth having some conversation before we ask you to take action.
And just echoing what you just said, the more that, I mean, we certainly welcome the community to give us the community to give us feedback, those watching us tonight, or keeping track of our minutes or agendas, but we may want to do some purposeful reach out as well, because I think this is the kind of thing that could catch people by surprise if they were not aware that we were deciding something like this. And it would be good to hear where people are at in the community.
And we did that last year, right? Didn't we come in with statistics about, I know we polled a lot of people. So for our new board members, if I recall correctly, we were at about a 50-50 split, weren't we, with those folks who weighed in on whether
We tallied the emails before or after Labor Day, yeah.
So we did get a lot of feedback from the community, which was fabulous. It just, I think, was like
It didn't land us in a far Yeah, but in any case, at least we wouldn't necessarily be making a decision, as you're suggesting, without, you know, somewhat blindly. So, all right. Something to think about.
Dr. Bellistracey, the next two items are simply the calendars that are attached to the school calendar.
Right, so we have both receive items. 9.3 is the 2025 Board of Ed Meeting Calendar, so this has our regular meetings and our workshop meetings listed, almost always on a Monday, but occasionally on a Tuesday, when we have either a Monday holiday immediately proceeding, or our budget public forum meetings at the end of January. And then 9.4 is the committee meeting schedule. We are back, which I am really quite excited about, to rotating through all of our other schools for our workshop meetings, and then the policy and/or curriculum instruction assessment committee meetings that happened prior, so.
Small typo.
Except for the occasional getting caught in a very small chair after a two-hour meeting. It's great.
There is a small typo.
Where are you looking at?
I'm looking at 9.3 and 9.4.
Okay.
And it called my attention, because there's a workshop meeting in May that's on a Tuesday, May 27th should be May 26th.
Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for looking.
And it appears on both calendars, once for the workshop meeting and once for the CIA.
So it should be May 26th.
Tuesday, May 26th. Thank you for catching that. And again, these calendars are approved in advance as required. They are not locked in stone. The board can always change a meeting date, adjust a meeting date, or add meetings as necessary, which you almost always do.
And once these are approved, then they give you certainly the community a sense of when we're meeting and where we're meeting, so they can come and join.
Excuse me, but May 26th, the Monday, is Memorial Day.
May 25th is Memorial Day, is what the, and I'm only looking at the three drafts. It shows May 25th as a Monday.
First Wednesday, then the first Monday.
Yep, I'm seeing May 25th on the calendar as well, so do we have an error on the school We'll make sure we get it locked down before we bring them to you to take action on them.
Okay.
May 26th is a Monday according to my
Correct. So we may have an error on the school calendar that we presented to you.
No, I, on mine, it's May 25th is the Monday, of 2026.
So are your computers working at the right year? Are you looking at 25?
May 25th is 2026.
It flipped back on me, sorry.
It'd be May 26th.
It flipped back on me.
Crazy that we're planning for May of 26.
All right.
Great, thank you.
9.5 is to act on recommendations from the policy committee.
Great.
Looking at 25.
So the first one that we are acting on, now, this is all Title IX related, which we've talked about for months, and everyone received this last month, and hopefully spent some time looking through it.
Yes.
I will jump in really quick, Kristin, sorry. The error is 26 versus 25.
Yes.
We're looking at the 26 calendar here, but we're looking at 25 meeting dates.
Throughout the whole?
The 25 meeting dates are correct. So I was in error.
Oh, yes.
That's why we're getting confused.
Thank you, got it.
Sorry for the interruption.
That's okay. Okay, back to the really exciting stuff. So policy, we're going to just, I think that we should just take them individually for voting purposes. And I actually just have a question, it may be a typo. The very first page, Policy 4112 for Personnel, it says prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-biased harassment. All of our previous have said sex-based harassment, and they kind of both make sense, so I'm curious which one is correct.
I'm so sorry, where
Where are you looking?
Where am I looking?
Right in the title. If you look at page 26 of our packet, on policy
Sex-biased harassment.
So we see sex biased, right, but our read-only versions say sex-based. So I just don't know which is technically correct, because, I mean, they kind of do both make sense.
They do both make sense.
But I see, so here's all of our
The ones that we had last month.
The ones that we had last, no, they're all sex-based.
And the ones, this one's all
And this one says biased.
I think it's a typo.
I think biased is a typo, but I
It's sex-based harassment.
I think so, too.
But that would require someone to have added the I since the first draft. That seems odd.
Right, it does.
It's sex-based.
So
It is.
I think so, too, yeah.
I mean, I hear you.
Well, we could approve it as such.
Because see, the language down here says sex-based harassment is a form of sexist discrimination. There we go. That answers the question.
I feel like I want to blame autocorrect.
It's probably true, yeah. Because throughout, it's the title throughout the whole document.
See the definition.
And I think we probably passed it through last time with a squiggly red line under it, knowing that that was the right word, but autocorrect.
Or we just had based, yeah, so.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so sex-based harassment.
Good catch.
I think that we should just go through it regardless, right? We're just going to double-check that and make the correction? Okay.
So, I'm so sorry, so am I repeating my understanding, which is that we are going to assume it is sex-based vote in that manner and come back if we have to?
I think, I think that's what we should do.
Perfect, no, I think that's the way to go.
I agree.
Okay, very good. Okay, so we're going to take first, Policy 4112, which is for Personnel, and this is Title IX, the prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment. Does anyone have any questions on this policy? Now, let me just, I guess, say one blanket statement, which is all four of these, the two policies and the two regulations, are complete rewrites. So we have removed our old policies, and we have implemented these new policies and regulations to be in keeping with the state and the federal policies. The two major improvements in the current policies relate to no longer having a blanket application for these for grades K through college for the students, and also the procedural process is better defined. So historically, Title IX complaints would wind up taking months and months and months, like up to a year, which would mean nothing punitively could be done, so someone who might be on the receiving end of some kind of sexual discrimination may wind up having to sit with that for a very long period of time. This has corrected some of the procedural circumstances to make that happen more quickly, and that is across all four of these regulations and policies. Anybody have any other questions or comments?
I did have a question, though I can guess the answer. So I am noting that on the very front page, there's an identification of where inquiries about Title IX should be referred, and it names Jason Bowden, Assistant Superintendent. So the district's Title IX coordinator is. This means, of course, since Jason has identified his resignation, that we will need to update this following his resignation, but I'm guessing it was intentional to put a person's name rather than just a position.
I think we are required to.
Probably has to.
That's what I thought, I was just double-checking.
We will update this as of July 1st with a new name.
I assumed it must be required, but I just want to walk us through it. Okay.
And to be clear, even should that position still be vacant, the district would be required, it is not positional.
To name an individual.
Yes, it's an individual, so we include title and contact information, but we will have, in Mr. Bowden's absence on July 1, a new individual and that position named in the documentation.
Great, okay, thank you.
I think it's also worth noting again that these are full replacements, so in your vote to approve each of one of these tonight, it wholly replaces the existing language, rather than giving you 14 pages of red line to try to make one now correct to the other. It's a full replacement of the existing language.
Dr. Freeman, when we wind up having to change names, do we have to vote on that again, or is that something that the district can just appoint the new name and make the change on their own?
I think you do, but we will come to you and ask to waive the first and second reading, and ask just to do it at your first meeting in July, since there will be no reason to go through a month-long cooling period to change that name.
Okay, very good.
And we will update the documentations at the state immediately, as we always do.
Okay.
Any other questions about Policy 4112? Okay, all right. So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve this essentially brand-new Policy 4112, prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment, and in this vote, then making null the prior policy that reflected this content. Is there a motion?
Some.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that everybody? Anyone opposed? Okay, wonderful.
And then we have regulation.
Yes.
Associated Regulation.
So Regulation 4112, prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment, is the regulation that accompanies this policy. Kristin, is there anything in detail you want to make sure is mentioned, or does anyone have any questions about the full regulation for this? All right.
It also says biased, so we have to
We'll correct it on all, then?
Yeah.
We'll say the form, though, is correct. The form does say based.
Based, yeah.
Yeah, we'll correct that on all the titles.
It seems to say based everywhere within.
That's right.
It is, the title just got missed.
All right, is there a motion to approve Regulation 4112, which accompanies the policy of the same name, prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment?
Move.
All is in favor? Aye. Okay, that's everybody, thank you.
Okay, Policy 5002 and Regulation 5002 is, of course, this is the governing policy and regulation for students. Again, prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment for students and the accompanying regulation. Does anyone have questions? And again, this is a complete rewrite and replacement of the old one.
All right, so is there a motion to approve Policy 5002, prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment? This is in relation to students, and again, the vote in favor would also be a vote to replace entirely the pre-existing policy.
Some moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's everybody, thank you. And then Regulation 5002 accompanies this policy, again, for students, prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment. Are there any questions about this? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve Regulation 5002, prohibition of sex discrimination, including sex-based harassment?
Some moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All right, that's everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. All right, we are up to agenda item number 10, reports of committees. Does the policy committee have anything else to report out
No, ma'am.
Tonight? Operations committee, anything, John, that you wanted to add?
Nothing to add.
All right. Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee?
There was a meeting when I was out of town, so somebody else has to summarize it.
Sure. So we discussed the through line from the Portrait of a Graduate to the Classroom and the coherent professional learning for educators that kind of connects all of those pieces along the way. Then we looked at a report from the Ed Ethics Team from Harvard Graduate School of Education around the professional learning that we do with the dilemmas, and they showed us that our teachers regularly face ethical dilemmas in the classroom and find it very helpful that they have that sort of opportunity to practice through professional learning. And then we looked at some of the possible enhancements that we could consider around curricular review, writing, and training, and the implementation cycle, so kind of all of the pieces of curriculum writing and review. And that was it.
Wonderful, thank you for that recap. Any liaisons to town committees?
Does that have anything to add for tonight?
All right, and we are still working out an approach to the LEARN Board of Directors. Number 11, 11 on the agenda is public comments on items, they don't have to be on the agenda. I am noting that there is no public present tonight. I don't have, or, Dr. Freeman, do you have any closing statements necessary for tonight? Anything you want to add before we close?
I might just share that related to the CIA meeting a couple of weeks ago. Dr. Gross and I had the opportunity to join the team from Harvard and share about the work that we have been doing at Queensborough Community College at the Association for Moral Education Annual Conference, and we did that with the team from Harvard and with other professionals from Brookline Schools in Massachusetts, who are also working with the Ed Ethics Team and the ethical and equitable dilemma structure that you all experienced last year. So it was fun to be able to be part of that and to have the opportunity to share Guilford's work, once again, in a setting where people appreciate it here, what we're doing. And it was really exciting, and it was a good opportunity.
Wonderful. Excellent.
Queensborough Community College wasn't
Wasn't.
But it was a beautiful campus, and it was an interesting conference to be sharing at.
Wonderful. All right, so I will just close with a reminder again to ask members of the community to please weigh in if they have strong feelings either way about the calendars that we are looking at for the 25-26 academic year. So again, the points of comment would be a start date prior to or after Labor Day, the consequential end date in June, depending on which start date is chosen, and then the potential for one calendar draft, which would have a prior-to-Labor Day start of adding two days to the winter break to create a full two-week break. So we definitely look forward to hearing from any members of the community on those decisions. We will be voting on a calendar option at our December meeting. And then the second thing is just, again, a reminder that we do have our administration actively involved in budget conversations, and always look forward to hearing from the community if they have input about that. Unless anyone else has anything to add, then I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you for joining us. Good evening.